And the letter will be going out and we just celebrate the birth of a new individual.
That has nothing to do with the.
No, I understand.
I don't need to be cold, but.
No, I know because problems are problems and people can get hurt.
I'm just concerned that our officers have gone there.
I know.
We had a bartender at 3:00 AM intoxicated.
Another event.
You had folks there, patrons at 2:02, they're not supposed to be there, looking.
Right.
I mean, I don't go and I look to. At 2:00 AM. And you had one of the folks drinking. Now I'm standing strongly at my 2:50.
Okay, well, I hear you, Mrs. Carlson, are you of the same feeling on that versus 150?
No, I'd stick to the 2:50 because I think it's got to, it's got to send a message. It's got to send a message to the other establishments that they are given a liquor license as a privilege. You know, it's like getting your driver's license, it's a privilege. Just because you breathe, you don't get it. So I think we're having issues now and let's, let's send a message. Maybe we can stop this now, maybe the other establishments will, you know, say, oh, boy, okay, we don't want to be standing in front of the council.
Thank you, I was about to grill 100. I mean, I don't think compromises, I know we did a 250.
Yeah, actually, ventures wants to come before us also.
I would just say a scheduled fines would really be a recommendation in the ordinance, but I would just maybe consider the fact that a person who is speeding could get a $100 fine for speeding, a drunk stop, and it's not, there's been a lot of debate, I think, of what 250 or scheduled fines, too much. I haven't believed a 250, 500, 1,000 is exceeding, considering a person could get a heavy fine for driving an owner too fast.
If it stops drunk driving or it stops an incident, I mean, 2 o'clock in the morning, you're not looking for a party room.
Okay, I heard the comments. I'll recommend a $200 fine and that's as high as I go, otherwise we go nothing tonight. So before we decide, I vote, I think, on that one. A $200 fine and a warning and letters out to all providers regarding this. That's my motion. Do I have a second, Mr. McGee?
I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Okay, all in favor on that one?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. And again, 250 is only $50 more and I agree with after hours not following. Hire a person that knows how to watch the clock and that goes to all 19 of our establishments. Again, that's not necessarily a law enforcement job is to sing out the time like a cockatoo, you know, 1 o'clock, 1:15, it's 1:30, time to close, 1:45, going, going, go on. Law enforcement has other things out there to do, so hire a clock watcher, maybe I'll put that in that letter too. Okay, that one's covered. Thank you, Colonel. Next, we have, what do we have? Oh, all right, discussion and/or action. Number one, Mrs. George, regarding this one. I didn't hear you, was your mic on or was that late hour?
Town council rules of procedure.
Okay, all right. We have this before us and I, I will entertain comments or discussion before or after a motion. Do we have any comments regarding this reference nine that we have in front of us as far as a motion to approve or not?
Can I make a motion to table?
Yes, you may, that's what I kind of wait for.
Second.
All right, motion to table and to second, reference nine, on the town council rules of procedure. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, we will table it till, oh, you didn't put a date, I would say at the next meeting? Or are you going to put a date on that or just table?
Aye. It's up to the.
Okay.
I said how it works with the.
Okay, it'll probably be May 8th, the next meeting. All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Number two, reference 10, Mrs. George.
Discussion on zoning amendment to address marijuana, aquariums, extractions, and retail stores.
Okay, Mr. Waters or Mr. Gorm, who shall go into this?
I'll take this one. Currently, before the state of Rhode Island, there's discussion about legalizing marijuana for recreational purposes. It's been discussed and passed by various council members to gain to restrict marijuana aquariums as well as areas where it can be grown.
So we all, we have this in front of us, it's reference 10, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gorm, would you like to comment regarding this proposal?
The town manager is correct, the general assembly is considering legalizing marijuana. I think you'd have to be living under a rock, I understand that. So this is among the recommended. This is among the recommended ordinance changes that were circulated around the state by the attorney general. They gave examples of what other towns have done to address what is essentially the anticipated retail aspect of marijuana when it's legalized or perhaps before it's legalized. I mean, what's happening is, well, most likely when it's legalized, if it's legalized. Right now, in Coventry, about a year and a half ago, we prohibited in all zones the compassion centers that are populated around Rhode Island. And what we do allow, the cultivation of marijuana for personal medicinal use for up to two people in each residential dwelling. And that's it. That's, we had a case that went to the Rhode Island Supreme Court involving someone who claimed they were manufacturing pharmaceuticals. And we prevailed in that case under our zoning ordinance. So that would have opened the door for cultivation outside of that amendment. Under the existing language we have in our ordinance which says that pharmaceutical manufacturing is allowed in some zones and then it's not in others and horticultural activity is allowed in some zones and not others. Point is, it's not, marijuana cultivation is treated as a separate activity right now and it's only allowed in homes for personal medicinal use. So this is something, tonight, we're not actually presenting this as an amendment to the zoning ordinance. It is strictly for discussion because it's unclear what's going to happen with the state and it's unclear where this council wants to go with the preparations you might want to undertake with the, the activity before the general assembly. So that's it. If there are questions, this, this tries to address really the retail aspect of marijuana. If it's legalized, and we've heard a number of different proposals that are going through the general assembly, some are going to give towns what they call the opt-out provision, which means they can opt out of allowing retail sales and it's a very complicated process. My own impression of what's happening at the general assembly, there are going to be amendments right down to the wire, probably right on the floor, because this is a major amendment to the law of Rhode Island and there's a lot on the line with how this, how this plays out. So I don't think we're going to know until the very end exactly what the general assembly is going to do with this and I don't think we're going to know when they're going to do it. So one thing I do know is that under existing law, the town has the authority to do this. Under zoning. Under zoning, under the zoning enabling act, they have the authority to do this now. If the general assembly attempts to supersede that authority, there are some debatable issues such as, well, under the Home Rule Charter that we, under the Home Rule Amendment to the Rhode Island Constitution, Article 13, is this a local matter? Can we do this notwithstanding what the general assembly does? All issues that could come up someday, but I thought it would be prudent to have a session going now, given the fact that the general assembly, because we have a really complicated picture in our zoning ordinance on exactly what we're going to do. Remember, right now, retail sales are not allowed by law. You can't open a store and start selling marijuana in Rhode Island unless you're in a compassion center, which we have already said, no. So this is anticipatory, just to be clear.
Okay, so it's for discussion.
Yes.
I'm personally all for any protection we can give for the town would be good because my opinion, if the general assembly can make a mistake, they will, all right? And just that's, that's how it's been, that's how it is and that's how it will be. It would be, it'd be a terrible thing to have retail stores in Coventry selling marijuana when we have all other kinds of problems and everybody has different opinions, but this is not for medical marijuana, which I, again, I'm against that one. However, that's the state law, so this is only to protect Coventry in case the state decides wrong. And I'm for it, but it's something where we're not going to vote on tonight and I don't know what other council people think about it, but I like, I like the ends on, on page two, on the emporium, on the marijuana stores and on the marijuana extraction, all zones, all areas, and that's, I'm good on that one. Any other comments? Yes?
I have a question.
Sure.
Does this include edibles, like if there was someone going to open a bakery and have edible marijuana?
I, it's designed to cover every situation that we can think of under the known technology right now. I think that might be the extraction.
I, I, I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
But on the, on the first page, on the definitions.
Oh, yeah, marijuana stores.
I think it's.
It's the second page. Marijuana extraction, use of butane, which burns down houses, propane, other solvents for the purpose of extracting marijuana, probably putting them in cookies and two bars.
I have no idea about, I don't, I don't know how it's made, I'm just asking. So if someone decided to open up a bakery and, oh, they have that, that's why I just.
Cover.
It, okay, I, I don't know, that's why I, I was just asking the question.
Probably the extraction provision and the other provisions, the retail and the emporium, they're probably redundant.
Okay.
They're superfluous to some degree with each other, but that's probably not a bad thing because you're trying to cover as many situations as can be thought of. And again, you may want to permit one of them, but not others, but I think that might lead to some confusion because they are redundant and they are, they do overlap to some degree. So if you say yes to aquariums, but no to extraction, you know, you're going to have, you're going to have unusual situations that, there will be arguments made by attorneys and applicants and so forth about why what they're doing is permitted because.
Like I said, I have no idea if it's, you know, if it's extraction or if it's just a leave, I have no idea.
If you're going to do one, I think you should do all. If you're not going to do one, if you, if you're going to say yes to one, I think you should say yes to all. And if you're going to say no to one, if you just don't like one, you should probably say no to all of them.
Any other comments, Mr. McGee?
We don't, we don't know what the state's going to do yet.
No, we don't, and, and remember, there's another thing overhanging this, which is it's still illegal under federal law.
Yes.
It's a controlled substance.
I mean, I deal with that with CDL, I mean, you can have marijuana, you still can't, you know, federal laws overseas. My question is, regardless of what we pass, if state law passes the reality of certain places, are we still able to say no in Coventry even though state law has?
Well, the problem with that is, that's a question of law because under the Rhode Island Constitution, anything that is local in nature, we may very well have the right to control it and it may be, this is why I brought up, there are going to be so many amendments right down to the wire on this. It may be that the general assembly exceeds to that idea, exceeds to that idea and says, all right, let's let towns decide on their own. And you don't know until you get there. So it's possible that the state law will preempt, but it's also entirely possible that the state law will allow us to do it any way we want.
Do you see something happen this legislative season?
I tried to predict the general assembly for 10 years when I was there and I have not, I've never been right.
Well, I think, I think that's why the attorney general has been contacting all cities and towns, forewarning them, cities and towns, get your pores in the water because of what might come. Now, I know I read the headlines, the governor's trying to slow down this locomotive and I don't know what that means, slow it down, whether it goes or it doesn't go, but to tell you the truth, she doesn't have the power that the general assembly has, the Speaker of the House and, and the head of the Senate. So this is just something where I think you want to cover all bases. I think it can always be changed. When, does this have to go to zoning or is it, if we wanted to direct this?
This is strictly a land use activity. This is strictly under zoning.
I know.
So it would go to the planning commission.
Planning first.
Yes.
Well, we could hold off, next month in May, or we could vote to send it off to planning or do we have to vote or just send it to planning?
Well, it's, it's.
Well, you're discussion only right now on the agenda, so not on the ordinance.
Well, it's under discussion and, and/or action.
Correct, just says discussion on the.
Oh, I see, okay.
Traditionally, the way we've done.
Got it, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Try to prevent.
Well, all right, discussion, I, I got that. So that you don't even have, we don't want to action send it to planning then, we're just discussing it.
Right.
Okay.
We can put it on the May 8th agenda for first reading to get onto.
Any other?
Formal process. If an amendment to the zoning ordinance is made by a member of the council and signed and submitted, according to the zoning enabling act, the amend, the clerk, actually, I believe it's the person designated by the council to receive zoning amendments, which could be the director of planning, I think it's, is the director of planning, is actually supposed to immediately refer it to the planning commission upon receipt. So there's actually not required council action to do it, but we have done it. We have always voted to send it to planning anyway. So, you know, it's, it's probably just best to wait till the, the May meeting to address that. It's, it's always a timing issue with these because if it's submitted and you need to hear from planning right away because you want to adopt it, it can be sent to planning right away if it's submitted.
Well, I'm okay with that. Any other comments of council? I know that the general assembly, whatever they do, they usually wrap up by the end of June, they'd like to be out by July 1st. So as long as we keep that timeline in, in, in mind, maybe we'll just move it to the next meeting unless there's any other comments or judgments, okay? All right, so we just go beyond and next one, right? Okay, we're all in agreement, so discuss. I would, yeah, if necessary. To do something with it. Okay, M., Mr. George.
So first reading of the amendment to the zoning ordinance, Article 16, Development Plan Review, Section 1610, to include Articles 1631.
Okay, anyone want to speak on this one, Mr. Waters or would it be Mr. Gorm on this?
This was discussed in a previous council meeting.
Right.
So this is the first reading that comes before council.
All right, it's only, it's only the first read, so.
The, this is the amendment that was, just to review it again briefly.
Right, that's what I like.
This was proposed as a remedy to, let me roll back a little further, the way the town zoning ordinance is written, every single dimensional variance, use variance, special use permit, zoning amendment, everything, almost everything you can think of goes to the planning commission for an advisory opinion. That is allowed by the zoning enabling act under Title 45, Chapter 24, Section 49A. But you don't have to send every single thing to the planning commission for an advisory opinion. The, on the other hand, if you do that, if you send everything, you tend to overburden the planning commission from work that might be more important. So the idea here is certain dimensional variances for sheds and things like that, I think it's probably within the wisdom of the zoning board to make those decisions, however, this amendment, without advice from the planning commission. However, this does allow the planning commission, even in the case of dimensional variances, to request an advisory opinion if it wants to from the planning commission. Everything else remains unchanged. Special use permits must go to the planning commission for advisory. So do use variances and the other things that I answered, there's a whole plenty of them in the zoning ordinance, but the important one that's being taken out as required is the dimensional variance. So this will go to the planning commission for review and I'm pretty sure that they will approve it. The chair of the planning commission, Mr. Crossman, asked, he, he said this would be the best way to deal with it. Before, for many years, many things were not referred to the planning commission at all and they probably should have been. So this is, because the new rule, the rule that's been in the ordinance for a long time is now being followed, it's a little bit over inclusive, so what we're doing is taking something out that we think will give the planning commission, like I said, more time to focus on the things that are probably more important in their advisory capacity.
Okay, and this, this is just a reading, so it's not a vote and we just go on, is that correct?
And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, this is already on the agenda for the planning commission's next meeting to vet this proposal.
So do we need to read it?
Uh, no. I don't think we need to read it, you know.
I'm asking.
No.
So we have to read the thing and.
It's simply to be on record, so the public knows that the council is considering doing this.
Okay, very good. All righty, so we'll ride along, we're on to N., public comment. Public comment, general public comment. Mr. Jackson first and then the lady in the back, back row.
N. Jackson, 2799 Hockney Hill. Just got two things. The first one is I would ask the council to consider taking what other communities are doing on episodes like JW had, where you had to have multiple police departments plus the state police, we had injuries, that they act as, they close them down that night until the liquor board meets, they stay closed. A special meeting could be held. The second thing I would like is Colonel McDonald or his and/or staff to request the state police to stop patrolling Hockney Hill Road on a regular basis. While we have a great department, they're limited and I think they only come by maybe once or twice a day. Hockney Hill Road, as everybody knows, is about, is 45 miles an hour, first of all, and it is, oops, Route 117, the next road over, which is about 40% wider, has a speed limit of 35 miles an hour and they have many, many less curves. We've had so many accidents on Hockney Hill over the years, we've had death and everything else going on up there. I had given Colonel McDonald a survey by, by Chief Volpe when he first began and he came back and said, it's very difficult stopping anyone on Hockney Hill Road and I fully agree. You know, I know they are at the bottom of the hill, but the problem is far west end, they stop there, it's a raceway from about 6:30 in the morning till about 8:00. And then in the afternoon, the crowds go the other way. We have an enormous amount of content of Connecticut cars, you cannot believe how many. You know, residents on Hockney Hill are thinking their life in the hands of, to get their mail. They really, last year, I had to call the police, the Coventry Police, that a Porsche came within six inches of me at a high speed. They took care of that, I know they took care of it, but I would ask that the state police now stop patrolling too. You can have two more patrols a day and if the state police can do the early morning one, it would be great to have, so that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you. In the back.
Good evening. My name's Sheri Altikin, I live on Victory Highway in Green and I have a question to the council. Could somebody please explain to me why District One does not have anybody on the planning board to represent our needs?
I think actually two people represent this.
Actually, there's two people, but I'll let the other councilman answer your question.
Okay, so when it was raised as a point today that we didn't have enough coverage for the green, so two people are enough people on the planning board to cover District One, when we have the most to lose if you guys push through the solar power? And that's exactly what it looks like you guys are doing at this point, type, is trying to push through the solar power and the wind turbines and all the other changes that you're going to make. I am sorry, but a lot of families that live in Green did not move to Green, so you guys could change the way the zoning is. We're here because we want agricultural living, we want our children brought up in that environment. We want our land left where it is.
Let me just, let me just say one thing, is that two out of nine, it's more than 20%, and nobody's putting people on board to do what you're accusing the council of doing. You know, it sounds, I guess, humorous to you, but I got your comment and I thank you for coming up, we, we've heard you.
You've heard me, but you're dismissing me, you're not listening to the rest of Green. Why don't you throw it out to the residents of Green instead of sitting here behind these walls and doing as you please? You are not listening to your residents. There are petitions going around, there are a lot of people that are angry about this that don't want it. You are put into positions to represent the people, not your own personal gains.
Thank you, very good.
Can I just say that, excuse me, Mr. President, but what I was talking about, the two people that are on the planning commission from District One are east of 102, I was actually referring to west of 102 in the green area, so that was my, yes, there are two people from District One, but they're further down towards town.
But green, I've covered.
Thank you. Yes.
Covered by 90.
All right. And 90. Come on forward. Hello there, you might want. Hello there. You might want to bring the mic down.
It doesn't matter, you can't hear anything, because these things aren't working. I came to the town council meeting, and I didn't hear one thing.
Well, we'll have to let our IT man know that I didn't know it wasn't working.
Yes.
I actually, I don't need a mic at all, so it's a good comment.
Neither do I.
Right, so please continue, so we can hear all this too.
My name is Charlotte Porter, 26, Sandra, Syracuse. And here we are at the end of April, and of course that means it is asphalt season. I woke up this morning to a lot of heavy machinery before 7:00. It was like 6:35. After that, there was a horrible, horrible odor. Myself and my neighbors have already made several complaints to D E M. I would like the town council to answer me a question, please. The industrial park at 75 Airport Road is zoned for light industrials. How can a heavy industrial company be operating there? The company in question, Pashrock Asphalt, is a Connecticut company. The only thing they do in Coventry or Rhode Island for that matter is to make asphalt and contaminate our neighborhood. Their payroll checks are from Connecticut, their trucks are registered in Connecticut, their products delivered to them are from Connecticut. How in the world can I be allowed to operate illegally and ruin our neighborhood in Coventry and deliver their product back to Connecticut? I feel the council is sympathetic to businesses and not as concerned as they should be for the residents. Coventry has always been thought of as country living. How would the members like this noise and odor in their backyard? I've been called someone that's against a blue collar worker. I am not against any blue collar worker. I myself, my husband was a blue collar worker, my son drives trucks, he's into this. I'm just looking for a neighborhood. Mr. Shively, you yourself talk about your family in your grandchildren every two weeks. Would you like them living like this? I wish the council would take this into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Public comment? Anyone else? Yes.
Hello.
Hello, good evening. I'm Warren.
Okay.
We could, we could hear what you guys were saying, but we couldn't hear what anybody was saying up here.
We'll have to look into that.
This pertains directly to what Mr. Gorm was saying about the process of a special use permit needing to go to planning before it goes to zoning to get their so-called suggestions or approval. And this is not water over the dam, but in March of 2014, when our zoning board review allowed Mr. DePisquale to construct his wind turbines, it was done with the condition that, and I quote directly from the approval stipulations, "The applicant has demonstrated that there will be no substantial negative impact on the surrounding properties." And I'm sorry, but I have to say that again. The applicant has demonstrated that there will be no substantial negative impact on the surrounding properties. There's a two-mile flicker zone. I have flicker across my bedroom window, I have flicker across my backyard, and there are, there are people that live with one of these things behind their backyard. And the reason I'm bringing this up, was this was approved by the zoning board in 2014, and we're dealing with the solar issue now. Let's please remember that, another thing that was also stated, and that was, the proposed plan use is compatible with the comprehensive plan. Totally ignored. I don't mean any disrespect, but are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? There are tons of people whose lives are disrupted by listening to the turbines and may, and will also be by having the solar farms constructed near historical property, near property that has been put into perpetuity. And another thing I would really like to make clear that, there seems to be some confusion though, is that we are not against alternative forms of energy. We're all for that, yes, safety is a, we're all for that. But put them where they belong. It doesn't make any sense to strip animal habitat, cut down healthy trees that clean the air naturally, and put up a machine. Doesn't make any sense.
Anything else? Public comment? The lady in the second row in there, I saw your hand first. And then the gentleman that goes up and then down.
Good evening.
Good evening. Name please and address for the record.
10310 Lewis Farm. Okay, after many months of searching what solar panels are made of, I was finally able to find it. The only way I could find it was by searching the word "toxic" with solar. I have from the Department of Toxic Substances Control Regulatory Assistance Office being answered. Question was, what are, what are the constituent constituents that make the panels hazardous? Answer, in general, data shows that older silicon panels may be hazardous due to lead solid. Some older silicon panels are hazardous for hexavalent chromium coatings. Cadmium, pallorium panels are typically hazardous due to the cadmium. Gallium arsenide panels may be hazardous due to the arsenic. Thin film panels such as copper, indium, gallium, selenide panels may be hazardous due to the copper and or selenium. As an abut to one of these proposed solar farms, this is a major concern. There was quite a bit of vandalism in Western Coventry. It is not a question of if, it's a question of when these panels will be damaged due to vandalism. Once vandalized, the panels will leak and the toxins release into the soil, and eventually will make its way into our wells. Now what happens to us when our wells have been compromised, and then of course, what happens to our property values? It seems that state and federal agencies concerning health risks are more reactive than proactive. They will do their studies and tests after a community has had issues. If these panels are considered hazardous waste during manufacturing, installation, and decommissioning, then why are they not considered hazardous and vandalized while they're in the ground for 20-plus years? Quite frankly, I do not want myself, my family members, or my neighbors to become one of the town of Coventry's gaming things, or even worse, a statistic. Please listen to us, the people that live in Western Coventry. Solar power plants do not belong in a rural residential area, rather they should be where they are suggested to be placed on contaminated or browned plants.
Thank you. The gentleman next?
My name's Wigan Gallery, 637 Coon Road. I want to be counted on as kind of as one of the people who can catch the industrialization, industrialization and commercialization of green, western 102. I'm against that. I'm alarmed at how the turbines were permitted in here. It seems, it feels like it was a shitty process. It's my impression, I don't have any proof, but I do have that impression. And lastly, I'm stunned that one person can change the entire community because they have money and influence. This is what's happening. Green is a precious place, and I really, really, truly hope that you watch very carefully this developer who seems to be going rogue on us and on you. Please keep an eye on this, come on.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? I'll give the gentleman way in the back then.
Hi, Jesse Flor, 5961 Flat River Road, Green. I was just curious about the special use permits for the solar, for solar energy. Is, are we all going to be allowing special permit, special use permits for these solar fields?
Mr. Waters?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Special use.
Special use permits, are they going to be allowed? For the new ordinance? Yeah, it's still being discussed. I believe the way the ordinance reads now, or the draft ordinance, or what has been discussed from the council, there is some special use designation. I can't recall off the top of my head for what zones.
Are you guys concerned at all about the, opening the town up to lawsuits if a special use permit is declined?
Hopefully not, because hopefully the process will be done in a just enough manner that it just allows the decline of the special use permit.
I just want to make sure, I'm just concerned about the special use permits. I'd rather just see the zoning changed so that there's no solar ordinance.
Our current zoning ordinance that governs special use permits lays out a number of areas that the planning commission takes a look at when determined to suit for special use permit. So that's, that's not being adjusted at all, it's the solar ordinance.
Alright, next. Next.
My name's Kate Whittington, 586 Old Main Street. And I understand that 586 Old Main Street is a state road, used to be in 117. The traffic flow that goes from 117, turns the corner, comes around, and goes up to Calventown. Calventown is a town road. Old Main is a state road. Over the last 10 years that I've owned my home there, I have watched the increase in traffic, and I have watched and experienced drunk drivers, speeders, additional traffic. It's going to happen, understandable, I got that. I talked with Kevin McGee, and what they've done in Maryland for many years, and they do it around the country, is on the two electrical poles on this end of Old Main, the two electrical poles you can put big mirrors up, don't have to be attached to anything, they just are to make people aware that as you turn the corner, you're seeing, there's a woman that I was talking to, my neighbor, today, and she can't back out of her driveway safely, she's too close to this curb. I have an email into Rhode Island Department of Transportation to ask if we can put up a speed limit sign and do something to deter and help, because it's not just children that are growing up now, grandchildren around, and other children, it's five-year-olds, 85-year-olds, it doesn't matter. Kevin said that he thought that it was possible to, unaffordable, to put up those mirrors, and I would like to bring that to the council and have that addressed possibly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Gomano?
Paul Rollins, Cowest Trail, 662. I didn't plan to speak tonight, but when I heard some other people speaking, I'm back to solar, and I live out in that end after 30 years. And obviously, you heard enough, we don't want to see it destroyed. And I don't think we're selfish about that. I think our approach is real and is honest. I think selfishness is coming from the other end about greed and money, opinion, but I think that's the truth. But when someone mentioned, because my background is in metals, when someone mentioned that word cadmium, cadmium, and I'll tell you right now, if those panels are made from cadmium, you don't look into it, and that stuff leaches into the ground, you got serious, serious, that's a, that's a carcinogen. You don't fool around with cadmium, that's, that's worse than arsenic. Far worse than lead. So if those panels, you find out they're made from cadmium, if this stuff gets passed, you better not allow cadmium, it should be prohibited. You ask anyone who knows anything about metal, you look at cadmium, it will kill animals, insects, birds, anything that gets close, and eventually cause cancer in you over time. So once you've stopped this process. My other issue is this special use permit, which I'm not really going to use it or not, but I think, it was addressed by Linda. Special use permit, if you read it, and I'm sure you have, no one's self-intended, but I printed it out, I've read it. It has to be compatible with the comprehensive plan. So why don't you follow that? Also, it's supposed to be compatible with things that happen, compatible with the area that it's used for, which you're not doing. Wind turbines and solar panels are not compatible with rural western Coventry. Thirdly, it's not supposed to impact the welfare of the citizens in that area. Welfare is my well-being, our well-being. It's impacting our well-being. We're not sleeping right, this is frustrating the hell out of us, we're finding disappointment in you people by not taking a lead, only taking a lead by these developers, not listening to us. I think it's taken some years off my life, and if it happens, it will continue. That's my well-being, peace of mind. I came out there for peace of mind. The other night I looked at, it was foggy, and I looked at that thing, and I thought I saw a ghost ship. It looks like a freaking ghost ship out there. It's mind-boggling, it doesn't look real, it looks surreal. And my only thing, I'll close with this, and Nick, I've known you for a while. You came to my house when you, you wanted to be elected for state rep, and I voted for you, and no disrespect to you, and I know you can't, the council will do what it needs to do. But if you're representing that developer, I don't know how in your own conscience and good mind can also, because you've still influenced this council by what you say and don't say, and that bothers me. And I don't know how you people allow that to happen. He's representing these developers for solar and wind, and sits there and says, "Well, I can't tell the council what to do." But you can influence them, and don't say you can't. All due respect. Go ahead, you do respect.
I could, but I don't.
Ah, okay. I'll see you.
Believe me, that's...
Yeah, I don't.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? All in favor? The ayes ayes.